Live from the WKRG News 5 studio. You're watching the Mobile City Council Candidate Forum for District 7. Sponsored by Mobile United, the League of Women Voters, AFC Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Dorset Productions.
Hello everyone and welcome to tonight's City Council District 7 Forum. I'm Dana Winter. This is the final City Council debate we're bringing you to get you ready for the August 24th election. Our council debates are sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, Mobile AFC, AT&amp;T, and Dorset Productions. District 7 includes the University of South Alabama, Mobile Regional Airport, Spring Hill College, Bellwood, Overlook, and the Hillsdale Communities all west of I-65. The candidates are arranged on your screen in alphabetical order, left to right. They are Alan J. Barnes and Gina Gregory. Here are the ground rules for tonight. The candidates do not know the questions they will be asked. They have 45 seconds to a minute for their answers. There will be no rebuttals. We ask the candidates to answer the question being asked. We will rotate the order in which the candidates answer the questions. At the end, candidates will be allowed to make a one-minute closing statement. Our first question is a one-minute-long answer. It deals with annexation. In 2019, for the first time ever, the city council voted against allowing about 13,000 people living west of the city to vote on annexing into Mobile. The majority of those residents are white. The vote against annexation was on racial lines. Do you favor annexation? And what are your thoughts on annexation in general? We'll begin this round with Alan.
Yes, I favor annexation. It is feasible. Annexation under the present administration, I do not agree with. Annexation will work, but you have to have the county as well as the city come together and have a meeting because in the city of Mobile, we actually have two locations to where there is people within the county in the city. North Cotty Road to the west side is actually a small portion of the county. They are not in the city. They would need to be in the same meeting.
And Gina.
Thank you. The last annexation proposals that have come up where we allowed people to vote, I have voted in favor of allowing those folks to vote on whether they wanted to be annexed into the city. It includes the most recent that you asked about. There are only so many ways you can grow the city. That is to either bring people from without outside the city into the city or expand your borders. Only two, only two ways to make that happen. So I'm in favor of annexing neighborhoods that would like to come into the city. It's, it's not the council voting to annex. It is allowing people to vote to be annexed. So I'm in favor of allowing that to happen when it makes financial sense. The last annexation proposals we have had, we have drawn in retail corridors to help make sure that the fees are paid for all of the services so that we have more net revenues than we do fees or services fees going out.
Our second question deals with Ladd Stadium. South Alabama and the Senior Bowl have moved out of Ladd Peoples Stadium to be held at Hancock Whitney Stadium on USA's campus. What do you see for the future of Ladd Peoples? And what are your thoughts on more sporting events being held in District 7? This is another minute-long answer, and we'll begin this round with Gina.
Thanks. You know, Ladd Stadium is a historic iconic building, and we have a very aggressive and proactive board at Ladd Stadium doing a lot of work now to bring in other events, including sporting events, entertainment, even cook-offs are coming to Ladd Stadium. Recently, the city installed a walking track, and that's very special for the people who live there. So Ladd Stadium has repurposed itself to a large degree. There will still be football games played there, some college bowls. In the district, obviously, we have the University of South Alabama. We also have two golf courses and a worldwide, a world-known tennis center, the Copeland Cox Tennis Center, which is the largest publicly-played, publicly-owned tennis center in the country. So we have a lot of opportunities in our district for sporting events, of course, at South Alabama and the other ones that I've mentioned, tennis and golf. So we are blessed to have what we do, but of course, Ladd Stadium still has a role, still has a place in our city.
And Alan.
Yes, thank you. Ladd Peoples Stadium is a historical stadium. The second Senior Bowl game was played there as well as historically back colleges. When I was a kid, I would go there to watch those games. If it was ever taken down, destroyed, we would lose a lot of revenue. And plus, historically back colleges will not play at USA. They will only play at Peoples Stadium or Stadium in that nature. Thank you.
Our third question is the biggest issue in your district. What do you think the biggest issue is facing District 7? Why and what can be done about it? This is a 45-second answer. We'll begin this round with Alan.
The biggest issue in District 7 is diversity and inclusion being recognized. People are not being recognized to the point of where they are not being represented to the point of funds being distributed evenly. There are certain areas in District 7 that doesn't have sidewalks. That's one of the biggest issues. I had a 91-year-old lady ask me just the other week. She said, "Why my sidewalks don't connect?" I didn't answer her. So therefore, I think funds should be distributed evenly and distributed to the point of where not for some, but for all at all points.
And Gina.
I think infrastructure is the biggest issue that we have in the district, in the city of Mobile as well. Infrastructure means everything from street resurfacing to drainage repairs to constructing new sidewalks to repairing those that are in existence. Maintaining our city facilities is also very difficult, and the CIP dollars that we have goes toward all of those things. Sidewalks are built along major traffic corridors for the most part. There are some neighborhoods who have sidewalks because they were built when the neighborhoods were built as well. Hillsdale is a, is an example of where some grants were made possible by the state government and federal government, and so we were able to put sidewalks in those neighborhoods. It doesn't happen that often, but they are generally done along major traffic corridors, whether it's a grant or whether a private organization comes forward and puts the money forth.
Our fourth question deals with the airport move. This is a minute-long answer. The city's in the process of moving the commercial airport from Bates Field to Brookly. Do you support this move? And would you if considerable city funds become involved? This round, we'll begin with Gina.
For many, many years, a lot of people have thought it was a good idea to move the airport from where it is now to downtown in order to attract more business travelers, more leisure travelers, to attract the folks who are maybe driving to Baldwin County or to Pensacola in order to get a better flight. So that is something, that's something that's been in the works for a very long time, and they are still working out all of the details now. But if it makes sense financially and for the best needs of the people in the city of Mobile, then yes, I'm in favor of that. But it doesn't mean that we are totally leaving Bates Field because there will still be a use for Bates Field in the future. But we want people to fly out of Mobile, no matter where the airport is. And I think if we can attract those flyers, then having the airport moved downtown is a, is a good move.
Alan.
Yes, thank you. I'm in favor of the airport being moved downtown because it has one of the longest, well, the second-longest airways in the United States. That's where the space shuttle landed on top of a plane. So therefore, I'm in favor of the airport being moved there. I agree that Bates Field would be continued being used because we have commercial jets there as well, private planes, and so it will still be used.
Our fifth question deals with the capital improvement plan, also known as the CIP. It uses money from penny sales tax and divides it evenly among the seven districts for infrastructure projects. Is this fair for older parts of the city? And what changes, if any, would you make to the arrangement? This is a 45-second answer, and we'll begin with Alan.
Yes, I'm in agreement with the CIP fund because it's really needed. It needs to stay in place because if without it, well, it will grow eventually in the future with annexation because it would be needed to accommodate the citizens as they grow and multiply out to the, out to the Mississippi line. And eventually, I even see us actually annexing all the way to the Mississippi line. So I'm in total agreement with it.
Gina.
The CIP program has been one of the most popular programs that we have had. And of course, it all comes from that additional penny sales tax. About $30 million comes in total. $21 million goes to the districts, of course, $3 million per district. We are able to use that money to work toward priorities, working with the administration to do all of our resurfacing, to do the drainage work, all the repairs, the ditch cleaning, the striping, everything that comes up with infrastructure, including parks. We're spending a lot of money in parks in the district right now. So the CIP is very important in keeping it the way it is so that council members are able to work with their communities and with the administration to make determination as to how those funds are spent.
Well, speaking of the CIP, we're going to continue on in that same train of thought. What are your priorities in District 7 for CIP money? We'll begin with Gina.
Thank you. You've seen a lot of work in District 7. Ziegler Boulevard widening is going on right now. Of course, that's being paid for with state, federal, county, and city funds. When it's finished, CIP dollars will have to be used for extra landscaping, street entrance markers, and lighting. CIP money is also being used in Langen Park. We're finishing up pavilion work right now that was a half a million dollars' worth. We've also got some capital money going toward infrastructure work for the old band shell and the amphitheater. Again, CIP money goes toward all of the infrastructure, which is very, very important to everyone. It affects everyone, and that's how the CIP money should be spent.
Alan.
CIP money should be spent to take care of the district. I'm in total agreement with CIP money being used to allow infrastructure projects, to build a foundation for future generations for 40 to 80 years from now. Every project that's going on right now, once I'm elected, I would like to see those projects completed and actually taken one step even beyond to the point of where our future generations would have a place in an infrastructure and a plan to build upon for the next 100 to 180 years.
Our next question is also a 45-second answer. Does Mobile have enough parks? Are the parks it has properly equipped, maintained, and managed? We'll begin this 45-second answer round with Alan.
Mobile can always use more parks. Green spaces, there's a study that was made, that green spaces actually can reduce crime. It gives a person a mental status to where they have the ability to become calmer. When people are off work, it causes them to be more subtle, less domestic violence. So I would agree with more parks being constructed. There are some parks which are lacking. Some parks are actually giving more attention than others. I'm fully in agreement, but looking at, if anyone would take a drive and just look at the parks, you will see which ones have more attention given to them and the ones which do not. Thank you.
And Gina.
We have six parks in District 7. The biggest, of course, is Langen Park, where the biggest transformation is going on now because it has sat there for years without much work. Band-Aid, taking care of symptoms, projects, but small amounts of work. So right now, we are transforming Langen Park. We've put money into every park in the district for maintenance needs, new equipment, new shade structures, all those kinds of things that you have to do on a yearly basis. With six parks, it takes a lot of money from my CIP, from the district CIP, to take care of all of those. Building new parks is always a great idea. People love parks, but it always comes back to who's going to operate, who's going to maintain them. And every time we bring something up like that, that's the response. How do we maintain? We can't maintain what we have. How do we maintain more? So I think we're doing a good job with the staff and the funds that we have in the, in District 7 right now.
Our next question dealing with schools. This also a, this one a one-minute answer. What are your opinions of the public schools in District 7? And what, if anything, should the city be doing to work with the school system? We'll begin this minute answer round with Gina.
Of course, we all know that it is a county school system. The city has no authority nor regulation over schools. With that said, it doesn't mean that the city should not partner with schools when we can. We're working with the superintendent and the Board of Commissioners on many programs right now. And I think it's incumbent upon us to do that because the children who are in our schools now become our leaders tomorrow. So we need to do everything we can to support their programs, whether it is a magnet school, an academy, or Vo-Tech. All of those things are very important to help build the workforce of tomorrow because without our workforce, without a developed workforce, the businesses that are coming into Mobile won't have anybody to work. So again, we support the schools, we work with the superintendent as best we can, and we partner with them on many different avenues.
And Alan.
I totally agree with working with the school system, the superintendent as well. I think that even though we cannot, we can actually give our opinion, we can negotiate, talk about ideas to improve the school system, but we are lacking in our school system language. Teaching a child language, a second language at first grade through, through high school would give them the ability mentally and socially to adapt to the, to the outside world of America where they can actually explore new territories. And we need that within our school system. Language is very important. It gives them character, it gives them, it takes them out of a world of introverts where they actually will be more social towards other people, and they will not be an introvert.
Our ninth question dealing with crowded roads. District 7 has grown tremendously in recent years, meaning the roads have become more congested. Airport Boulevard installed a traffic light system to try and make commutes easier for residents. What's your opinion on the success of that project? And would you consider bringing that method into more District 7 areas? For example, around the University of South Alabama. This minute-long answer round begins with Alan.
Yes, I think more traffic lights and more traffic circles would be needed within the city. I think it would cut down on accidents, make people more confident about getting here and there from point A to point B, we know is a straight line, and just getting there to the point where there's less accidents because everyone is in a rush. And with COVID and texting, we need to be more cautious.
And Gina.
Well, as you mentioned, we have recently installed some timers along Airport Boulevard so that the lights help the traffic flow more easily. They're not stopping and starting along the way quite as often. So that has been a very big expense and something that people throughout the city have asked for. Bringing that to other streets would be a possibility. Why we are widening Ziegler Boulevard right now is the very reason you talked about congestion. Traffic is very heavy east and west. Trying to make that afternoon and morning drive easier for everybody is what widening Ziegler Boulevard is all about. So again, more traffic lights, maybe. It just depends on where they go. We have to look at everything on a case-by-case basis, but those timers have been very popular, and they're working very well.
Our next question dealing with tourism. The city supports visit Mobile to the tune of $2.7 million a year. With COVID threatening the future of the convention and meetings business, what should the city's focus be when it comes to tourism? This minute-long answer round, we'll begin with Gina.
Well, I would like to think that we are still going to be able to bring tourists into the city of Mobile safely, COVID or not. Mobile is blessed with so many natural resources, so much history. In particular, the whole story about Africa Town and the discovery of the Lotilla, that's something that this entire country and world really wants to know more about. So hopefully, we will be able to bring them into the city to show off what we are doing here. And also on top of that, our delta, our historic homes, the trees that are so beautiful. In District 7 itself, we have the Avenue of the Oaks, a beautiful place to walk, to ride your bicycle. So we are blessed with our natural resources, with our history, and everything that makes Mobile unique. We are born to celebrate, and we need to let people see that and experience it, COVID or not. We just need to do it safely.
And Alan, same question.
Mobile is unique. Its uniqueness is language, diversity, people from every walk of life. We are the melting pot of America with a Spanish-French here history. It's a beautiful town, but it has so much more to offer. And the only way to get there is if we come together to get there to the point of where no one is left out of the circle, becoming one Mobile.
Our next question deals with city-supported events. What should the role of the city be in financially supporting entertainment and sports events like college bowl games and classics, the Moon Pie Drop, or Bay Fest that no longer exist? This is a 45-second answer round. We'll begin this round with Alan.
Well, the, we don't have Bay Fest anymore. People want it back. I suggest Gospel Fest since we have a religious basis here, and it'll be a three-day event to bring more people in. My Facebook page is loaded with ministers around the world. I have a lot of friends who are celebrities from LA. I was once in the movie business. And they're eager to come to Mobile to explore the new adventures of Mobile. I've read about the Observation Wheel, the, the track, the walking bicycle and track that's actually going to come from USA and I'll wind up downtown. So we have a lot to offer Mobile, and we have a lot of things to explore.
And Gina.
I believe the city of Mobile should continue to support quality-of-life events, be it a bowl game, a music festival, or improving our parks. It's all about quality of life. It doesn't mean that we have to pay 100% of the tab, but what we do is we give them seed money. We help them with promotions because that means tourism comes in. Tourists come to see these games. They, they flock in to see the Senior Bowl and the players. So we have to be careful about it, of course, case-by-case basis, but yes, there's more to living in a city than having smooth roads and public safety responders who get to your door on time. That's all very, very important. But you've got to have quality of life. There has to be a reason for living in a city, and it's all about what makes us special.
Our next question deals with the Lending Tree Bowl. Two decades ago, when Mobile's bowl game began, the city paid $200,000 to support the game. Last year, the city spent almost $900,000 on the game, now known as the Lending Tree Bowl. To what level should the city financially support this game? This is a minute-long answer. We'll begin with Gina.
I don't know to what degree the city should support the game, what the financial numbers are. However, it is another bowl game. It is another part of our quality of life, and we have to look at the game, what kind of revenues it brings in, what kind of crowd it brings in. Is it feasible to continue supporting at any certain level? I'm sure that will be worked out. It will come to the council. We'll have a contract to agree to or not, but we need to continue to support it because of what it means to the city.
And Alan.
We need to continue to support it. We need the revenue coming in. We need the publicity as well. We need the tourism coming in where they would go to restaurants and continue to explore Mobile. Our museums, which we have plenty of them to see, and explore the city. Seafood, our museums, our paths, our Spanish history at Bemford Square, so forth and so on.
Our next question dealing with Gulf Quest. The Gulf Quest Maritime Museum cost the city $43 million to build, and despite being a world-class facility, has been a flop with the public. What should the city do with this property? Keeping in mind, there are restrictions owing to the use of some federal transportation funds. This also a minute answer, and we'll begin with Alan.
The Gulf Quest Museum is a beautiful building. I think the best out would be to sell it if it's permitted to do so, but it can be used for so many other things. It can be used for a gambling casino if it's ever permitted to have gambling in Mobile. It can be used for maybe even the tourist as far as the coming to Mobile to actually see the, the area of Africa Town. Maybe some of the mementos can be actually placed there, pieces of the ship or whatever can be put there as well to expand and use it for something. It can be used for something.
And Gina.
Gulf Quest Maritime Museum is a beautiful building. It's sitting on a beautiful piece of property, and unfortunately, it just hasn't caught on. We've had any number of groups and organizations come through, tour the building, and give us their ideas of what it could be, imaginings, if you will. It has to be repurposed. I think we all know that in order for it to bring in enough revenues to even break even. So what is that? We've all had just multiple ideas, but it has to bring in entertainment, it has to bring in families, and families and young people to come over and over. It has to be something that will attract people. We've heard about entertainment on the roof. We've heard about carnivals outside. You name it, there have been these ideas. So again, it has to be a plan that the city puts forth, the council approves, but at the same time, we can't sell the building. We own the building, and it has to stay with the city because we have federal grants that require us to keep the maritime theme and the transportation component.
Our next question dealing with the Civic Center. When Mayor Simpson came into office, he said the Mobile Civic Center was obsolete, could not be renovated or updated in a financially viable way, and was a huge drain on the city. The facility remains open but hosts few events outside of Mardi Gras balls. What do you see as the future of the Civic Center? We'll begin this round with Gina.
I see a future for the Civic Center. It may not be exactly as it looks today, but there certainly is a future for the Civic Center. There have been any number of plans and developers who have come in and given the city a couple of different plans, most recently. The theater is in great shape. I think everybody understands that. We also understand that there has to be a facility large enough and adequate to meet the needs of all of the Mardi Gras groups. So that's what we're working on. We haven't decided on any specific plan yet. We've heard from a number of groups, opened it up to the community. I think we'll do more of that before anything is ever settled on. But again, the Civic Center stays. We have to have some building within the city to provide for these entertainment venues and entertainment activities for the city and quality of life. But we also have to keep the theater. We also have to make sure that there was a place for the Mardi Gras balls as well.
And Alan.
Well, the, thank you. The Civic Center was built and opened up Thursday, July 9th, 1964. I was eight years old. That fall, I went into the building with my classmates on a tour. I never forgot it. When I first heard it was going to be destroyed, tore down, I was appalled at the idea because how could you destroy such a monolith of art? Those artisans who put it together are probably passed away, those mosaics. That is artwork can never be destroyed. That's a museum within itself. I'd fully commend anyone to try to restore it, maybe turn in the back of it around to where it'd be more curb appeal to the interstate when people are coming in to see it. Anything to try to keep it. We need to keep the auditorium, the Civic Center.
Our next question dealing with Amtrak. The city of Mobile promised $3 million to help bring Amtrak service back to the area, but Amtrak has gone back on a promise to conduct a study on what would impact, what the impact its use of tracks would have on commercial service. Should Mobile subsidize the return of Amtrak? This is a minute-long answer. We'll begin this round with Alan.
Mobile has put in $3 million actually to actually, to actually have the project go forth. Amtrak has pulled back. We need Amtrak to come to Mobile. We need it here within the city. We need that revenue. We need that tourism. Other cities have come on board. We need to come full on board. Amtrak needs to come and meet us all the way in. We need Amtrak.
And Gina.
Well, Amtrak hasn't pulled out. In fact, Amtrak is full speed ahead trying to come to Mobile from New Orleans. The current Senate Infrastructure Bill has put an unprecedented amount of funds into passenger rail, which includes that New Orleans-to-Mobile trek. At the same time, we've got the Surface Transportation Board going through some hearings. They've got another one coming up in December. So in some respects, it looks like Amtrak will be coming to Mobile if all of this comes to, comes to bear. And if that's the case, then the city of Mobile has to determine what its responsibility is, what our financial responsibility will be, and whether the state, the county, or other municipalities will come on board to help pay for those improvements or pay for a terminal. Right now, the city of Mobile is the only government that is on the hook for paying for anything, whereas in Mississippi and Louisiana, both of those states and some of their communities have stepped up to the plate to help.
Our next question deals with the mayoral endorsement. Who will you vote for mayor and why? We will begin this 45-second round with Gina.
Well, I would tell you that that's a very inappropriate question, but that's my opinion. You know, I am not running for mayor, so I'm not going to tell you that I am voting for Gina Gregory for mayor because I'm obviously running for the city council. I've always made it a policy to stay out of everybody else's campaigns. Nobody has asked me for an endorsement. I haven't endorsed anyone, and I don't intend to. So I'm not changing my policy to tell you who I may or may not vote for. I have my own campaign to run, and I intend to continue doing that through August 24th. And whoever wins is who we will work with.
And Alan.
Whoever wins, that's who I will work with.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to the next question. This one dealing with inclusion and diversity. Has the current administration done an adequate job of representing the diversity of the city in its appointed positions? This a 45-second answer. We'll begin this round with Alan.
I think the city has not done enough for diversity and inclusion. Looking at the applications, for an example, where you see race on applications, that is for the purpose of meeting a quota of either education or employment. It should state, "I am an American citizen or I'm applying for citizenship" because we are American citizens. A person should be in the pool, being able to actually be judged by their qualifications and their education to apply or go into school.
And Gina.
Okay, well, this is asking whether the mayor has done a good job in his appointments and hirings, his executive staff, and all the way through to department heads. I believe the mayor has done a good job in diversifying, whether it's a woman or minority or whatever. I believe the mayor has, has done a good job with that. And you look down through all of the staff, and you see that. Something else that we are doing a really good job with, I believe, is in hiring minority and DBEs, that's disadvantaged business enterprise, business owners to do work in the city. We have a robust program now where we are educating business owners to help them get qualified to get government contracts. Right now, the rule is 15% Right now, the rule is 15% or your best efforts to have a subcontractor who is a DBE or minority business owner. We already have some who are now primary contractors and getting 100% of those contracts. And I think that is a goal we need to strive for.
Our next question dealing with violent crime. Mobile is on pace this year to have the highest number of murders in a decade. Many of these crimes are being committed by teenagers. What can be done from a city standpoint to address this problem? This is a minute-long answer. We will begin this round with Gina.
You know, if I had the answer to that, we would have already solved the problem. I think it takes a team approach. It takes the community. It takes the clergy. It takes nonprofits to come together, to work together with a plan in place and start making a difference. It's education. It's prevention. It's enforcement. All those things that we know. With the American Rescue Plan money coming to the city, we will have a lot more money to be able to give to the nonprofits who work with young kids, who work with teenagers and at-risk children, to help them better understand how to alleviate any sort of disagreements. You know, instead of using a gun, you know, you maybe talk it out. But nonprofits need to be supported, and clergy needs to be involved along with the community in order to make a difference and to help solve the problem of teen violence and just violence in particular in the city of Mobile.
And Alan.
The problem is there's no respect. The officers, not all, but some, do not respect the citizens. And likewise, some citizens do not respect their officers. When I was a child, my daddy taught me to respect all officers, firefighters, whoever they were, to respect them. Where there's a lack of respect, there's a lack of trust. And when that trust and that respect come back together, then you will have it. Because crime is systematic, and we have to look at it in that sense. So, we need to come together, not with games or with dinners, but with talking to each other, resolving the problems, mitigating the problem to where it's less severe, where people can come together like they did once before, have that trust and respect.
Our next question dealing with police body cameras. Starting in 2015, Mobile purchased 500 body cameras for police officers. But earlier this year, there were two police shootings. In both cases, the officer was not wearing a camera. The city has since purchased 300 more cameras in the name of transparency. And yet, the Mobile Police Department will not make any of the video available to the media or to the general public. What would you recommend be the rules for the wearing of body cameras and the availability of video? This is a minute-long answer round, and we will begin this round with Alan.
Taxpayers pay for the cameras. Other cities actually give the video over to the local news station. The public can see it. If anything is horrendous, it can actually be blurred. But if other cities can do it, Mobile should be able to do it as well. I don't see there should be a problem with that. I think that every officer should wear their body cameras at all times. Once they're on, they should be on at all times. They're really needed to show both sides of the story. Because citizens, it's to protect the officer as well as the citizen. I was an officer, so I know. If you don't have a body camera, how can you give your side of the story? It's only a verbal agreement. It's only a verbal statement. You need that portion to be seen because a picture's worth a thousand words.
And Gina.
All sworn officers are required to wear body cameras when they are coming into contact with the community. I have been a part of approving contracts to buy the body cameras in both phases. And I think it's important that they all wear them. I think it's important that we do this. It protects not only the police officer, but it also protects the community, and it helps build trust. As far as releasing the video, I would be in favor of releasing the video, but I think you have to look at the legal ramifications sometimes, as well as whether minors are involved. So, it could be just done on an issue-by-issue basis, but generally speaking, yes, I would release the video.
Our next question dealing with homelessness. Mobile has a significant homeless population downtown as well as around I-65. What should the city's approach be when it comes to dealing with homelessness? And should more affordable housing come to District 7? This is also a minute-long answer round. We'll begin with Gina.
The city obviously has a role to play when it comes to homeless people within the city. We already support a number of programs, nonprofit groups that house homeless people, provide showers, provide meals, places to sleep. I think it's very important for people who are down on their luck, for whatever their circumstances are, that there are places for them to go to have something to eat, to find temporary housing, to be able to find a job, get help finding a job. So, there are a lot of reasons, you know, why somebody is homeless. We also have programs on board now for people who may not fall into that category, maybe for other reasons they are homeless. But it still gives them a place to go, to sleep, to get cleaned up, and to have a good meal. Again, I think it's important that the city still plays a role, still plays a role in funding these different programs. As far as affordable housing is concerned, yes, we are building affordable homes in District 7 and Hillsdale and Mobile Terrace primarily. As soon as any of these blighted properties are demolished, there's a place to build a house. Developers are going forth and doing it.
And Alan.
Yes, thank you. Affordable homes, are they really affordable? Most of the people who are on the streets actually was leased from CERSE. They have mental problems. They are locked up in Metro Jail in I-Wedge, and they need medical attention. They need a facility. Not all of them, but most of them do. It's a very serious issue. You put them in a home, they may set it on fire. I'm being honest with you. They have mental, serious mental issues. CERSE should have never been closed. Alterpoint and other companies like that should have never tried to take on the load. They cannot. Officers are overloaded. Picking them up, taking them to Metro, then there's more problems in Metro. I know for firsthand. I was there. I was a CO. So, affordable homes, the parts that they can rent out, those who have the mental ability to do that, to rent them, shower and take care of themselves, they can do that. But the other ones who have mental problems, where they need medication and they're a danger to society, need treatment. Thank you.
Our next question dealing with the Bayway Bridge Project. It's been a hot topic on both sides of the bay for many years to help with the congestion at the Wallace Tunnel and along I-10. What should the city's role be in the new construction of a new Mobile River Bridge and Bayway? This, another minute answer. We'll begin with Alan.
I'm fully for the Bayway Bridge. It's really needed. If anything happens right now, the country could be shut down on I-10. That's the main corridor right there. We really need it. I would suggest not towing, having a toll, but actually having a monorail system attached to it. Because the bridge is going to last a long time, probably about 150 years, I would say that bridge will last. And have a monorail system attached to it, transporting people back and forth from the east and western shore, where they can pay, and that would subsidize the toll completely. And it would be a tourist attraction to ride a monorail. Then we can take it one step further, even taking it to where people can ride the monorail to Fairhope Pier, ride it to Gulf Shores, ride it to Dolphin Island, even circle Mobile around, like Dothan has a circle around them with a monorail where people can park and actually get off and shop and come back and pick up their car at another location. So, we're looking at 150 years from now where we can have all this infrastructure put in place for them.
And Gina.
There's no doubt we need a bridge. Any weekend from spring to Labor Day, traffic is backed up from both tunnels, all the way back government or to Michigan Avenue. Right now, there is a seat at the table for the mayor as part of the NPO in looking at the Bayway Bridge and how it's constructed. It is a federal and state project and should be paid for by the feds and the state, not from the city of Mobile. However, because the mayor has a seat at the table, he at least has a part to play in how it's constructed and whether there will be a toll or not. If there is a toll, and that's a big if, I think local residents should either have free access or some sort of deeply discounted access to get across the bridge.
The rest of our questions this evening will all be 45-second answers. Our next question dealing with COVID-19. Have you been vaccinated for COVID-19? And if not, why? We'll begin this round with Gina.
Well, I have a very personal story to tell. It's why we are here tonight rather than last week. My husband and I have both been vaccinated, but he is a breakthrough case. He got COVID. On top of COVID, he got pneumonia. Very serious case. He was in the ER, running 103-degree temperatures. We have doctors who have told us, if my husband had not gotten the vaccine, he would have been in ICU. He might not have been with us. I've been vaccinated, so has he. I urge people to get vaccinated. I have recorded a public service announcement for the county health department urging people to get vaccinated. I coordinated three vaccine clinics in my district at three churches. I attended all of them. I think it's important for everyone to please, please consider becoming vaccinated so that this Delta variant and COVID can get under control, and hopefully, one of these days, we don't have to worry about it.
And Alan.
This is a personal decision. I made that decision. I have been vaccinated with the Pfizer. This is a very inconvenient medical condition that has affected the entire world. I would advise, when you're in a vehicle with someone who has not revealed their status of vaccination, you should actually wear your mask. It's very serious. The Delta variant is very, very serious. Being an EMS and also holding a certification with FEMA, I would advise everyone to get their vaccination. It's very important. I have been vaccinated when I was a child with the smallpox vaccination. Vaccinations work. We need to be vaccinated. Follow the science.
Our next question, the biggest issue facing the city of Mobile. What do you think it is, why, and what can be done about it? We'll begin this 45-second answer round with Alan.
Please repeat that, please.
What do you think the biggest issue is in the city of Mobile? What can be done about it, and why do you think it's the biggest issue in the city of Mobile?
Well, the biggest issue in Mobile is people not being recognized. Not being recognized in the certain social groups that they're in. Mobile is beautiful. The people is what made it beautiful. God garnished the garden with people. That was the finishing touch, and we are the finishing touch of Mobile. But we need to be represented with that ability to speak for everyone, to be a voice for the voiceless. So, everyone will have the same share, the same interests, and the same ability to go forth and become a Mobile citizen.
And Gina.
A little closer to home on the biggest issue for the city of Mobile is still infrastructure for me. Because we had a backlog, still have a backlog. And the reason for that is because over the years, the city had to use capital funds in order to put into operations to keep the city running. So, therefore, we had a huge backlog of infrastructure needs. So, we are going step by step, day by day, year by year, trying to fulfill those needs and to make improvements where they are needed, whether it's a city facility, whether it's a road, whether it's a park. I still think that infrastructure is our biggest issue, if you really drill down to what those issues are.
Our next question dealing with surplus. The current administration has built a surplus of tens of millions of dollars over the last eight years. How do you balance the need for a rainy day fund with spending money collected from taxpayers now for current needs? This, another 45-second answer. We'll begin with Gina.
Statutorily, we have to have a certain amount of surplus. We are blessed to have more than the statutory amount. You call it a rainy day fund, we can call it a hurricane fund or a tornado fund. What happens if we are beset by a catastrophic storm? The city shuts down. We can't make payroll. We can't go back into business. We can't make repairs. So, having that rainy day fund would offset that. We would be able to make those repairs, make the payroll, come back into business. I don't believe we should raid the surplus. However, with that said, we have been able to use a portion of some of the surplus for some citywide important projects in this budget that we're in now that have a big impact citywide. So, I would be in favor of that. Of course, again, it's on a case-by-case basis.
And Alan.
The surplus is needed. I think it needs to stay in place because we have a problem with hackers. If this city is ever hacked and our infrastructure is taken down, our systems, that money, we would need to take that money and actually pay the hackers the ransom to receive our city back. So, we need that surplus. There may be a natural disaster. We have not had an earthquake, but we're in an earthquake zone. It could happen any day.
Our next question, what is the best thing about the city of Mobile? This one, another 45-second answer. We will begin with you, Alan.
Nature. Mobile is beautiful. We have the monarch butterfly. We have the hummingbird. We have the Alabama yellow cardinal. These are beautiful things within Mobile. We have a lot to offer Mobile and to the world. Nature. I love the trail that they're working on right now. I love that because it shows the true nature of Mobile. It shows you what Mobile is made of. From the ostriches and the bait that you can scoop up and slurp them down in a moment. So, I love the nature part of Mobile. And on top of that, I love the diversity of all the people that comes together, the foods, the Haitian, the Vietnamese, the Thai. All these foods come together to make Mobile great. That's what makes Mobile great. We make Mobile great.
And Gina.
I think hands down, the best thing about Mobile are the people. You know, we are a unique blend of people here in the city of Mobile, and that's what really makes us special. We are hospitable. We are kind. We are caring. The natural resources would be my next best thing about Mobile. You can't go anywhere where you can find what we have in Mobile anywhere else. We have a delta. We have a bay. We have historic homes. We have historic trees. We have a Greenway Trail. We have 12 Mile Creek, 3 Mile Creek. We have so much in the city of Mobile to offer people that we should be cheering about. We should all be cheerleaders for our city, our history. We in Mobile are born to celebrate. That brand fits us, and we need to remember that.
Our next question, from the best to the worst. What do you think is the worst thing about the city of Mobile? Another 45-second answer. We'll begin this round with Gina.
I go back to what I was talking about a little before. We need to be cheerleaders about what we have in Mobile. Instead of being so negative and thinking about what we don't have, we need to be thinking more positively about what we do have. When you go to other cities, cab drivers, waiters and waitresses, front desk clerks, will all talk about how fabulous their city is. We need to do that in Mobile instead of being so negative about what we don't have, what we don't like. Also, a little closer to home and drilling it down for me is illegal dumping and littering. We've got to get a handle on that. We're putting cameras up in different places. Illegal dumping is a blight on our neighborhoods, and it keeps our neighborhoods from being inviting, and people will not want to live in the neighborhoods otherwise.
And Alan.
I will go back to sidewalks. Orchard Elementary School, there are kids in Summer Place, Carlisle, also Princeton Woods, who walk not on sidewalks, but in the dirt and the grass to school. We need to look at every area of Mobile, not certain areas, but every area. People complain about these things, the issues. The city is made up of people. They have feelings. They have emotions. They want things done a certain way. They want to look out for their children who are the future of Mobile. And if we can't look out for the children who are the future of Mobile, we can't look out for Mobile.
All right, our next question is our last question dealing with litter. What do you think of Mobile's litter problem? What can be done of it? What can be done about it? And how big of a priority should it be? We will begin this 45-second answer round with Alan.
When you respect your neighborhood, you actually have pride in it. I have seen, I've watched people dump out of their very expensive cars. And me being law enforcement, I see the tag, and it's like a memory thing. I automatically know it. And I don't report it. It's a shame that they would litter Mobile. I go to the stoplight, the red light or the stop sign, and I see thousands of cigarette butts littering the streets. You don't see that in Japan, other countries, Saudi Arabia. We need to have pride in our neighborhoods. We drive into our neighborhoods, ride in in our luxury cars, and then dump our McDonald's bag right at the entrance, or our frozen cup, or our Wendy's bag, or leftover french fries for the animals to eat, to try to feed the ferrets.
And Gina.
I agree, litter is a huge problem in the city of Mobile. I'm glad to see the mayor has hired Casey Callaway as a resilience officer to try to bring everybody together to do a better job of education and enforcement when it comes to litter. But also, neighborhoods get involved in cleanups. I'm very proud of my neighborhood groups who get involved in cleaning up their neighborhoods. We have cleanup days on Saturdays, and they make a huge difference. I think it's also good for the morale of people who live in those neighborhoods to do this, and it's a big help. But illegal dumping is a huge problem. I've been out on cleanups with some of my groups, and we have gone through the trash piles looking for contact information so that we can turn around and try to arrest these people who are doing the illegal dumping. It puts a blight on our neighborhoods. It is not right for somebody to come out from the county or from some other neighborhood to dump their stuff in a neighborhood where they think nobody cares. We care.
That was our last question. So, up next, we have closing statements. This closing order was randomly drawn by our candidates here this evening. We will begin closing statements with Alan Barnes. You will each have a minute for your closing statement.
I stand before you transparent, to represent every ethnicity. So, no matter what language you may speak or what country you may have originally came from, you are an American citizen. I am. I am the embodiment that stand before you this day. So if you really want diversity and inclusion, I am here. Swahili, Asante San, Arabic, Chukemlaka, French, Mirsi Boku and in English, thank you very much.
And Gina.
Thank you. I am proud to serve the citizens of the city of Mobile and in particular, the citizens of District 7. I'm also honored by the endorsements that I've received from the Police Benevolent Association and from the Firefighters Union as well as the Realtors and some of my HOAs and community groups. That shows the relationships that I've built, the record that I have in working with everyone for the betterment of the community. We have brought transformations to parks, we have built sidewalks, we've resurfaced streets, we've even helped build a state-of-the-art fire station in District 7. I am just incredibly happy to be here tonight to talk about what I do and the citizens of District 7. I am a consensus builder on this council, I have been proud to serve and I will continue to be proud to serve all of the citizens in the district and in the city and I just ask for your support and vote on August 24th.
Thank you so much to both of our candidates and also thank you to the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, AFC Mobile, AT&amp;T and Dorset Productions for sponsoring tonight's city council forum. Remember, Election Day is next Tuesday, August 24th. You can watch all of the candidate forums and our mayoral debate on wkrG.com. Thank you all so much again for joining us, good night.